Perfect. I'd just like to welcome everybody here this evening with respect to the regular session of council for the 26th day of March 2024. At this point, normally we remind everybody that this evening's meeting will be live streamed and put on our YouTube channel. Unfortunately, we've got some technical difficulties, so we don't have the ability to livestream, but it will be recorded and will be put on our YouTube channel fairly early tomorrow morning. So we apologize for that. Technology is a wonderful thing until it doesn't work. So having said that, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start off with our closed session we had earlier this evening and look for a motion to rise and report from closed session this evening. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. I would like to report from our closed session meeting earlier this evening that we approved the closed session minutes of March 12th and March 21st, 2024. We reviewed naming rights of proposal information and gave direction to staff and instructed staff to bring forward a report at our next regular meeting and received information to reports regarding human resources matters and gave direction to staff. And that's it. So thank you very much. Having said that, we'll look for an adoption of our agenda this evening as presented. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. First up, we have a public meeting with respect to and I look for a motion, first of all, to open our public meeting. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Pennell. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. The first matter in our public meeting is unopened road allowance closure and sale request. Applicant Mark and Brad Lambert, unopened road allowance between lots 12 and 13 concession four adjacent to 2032 County Road 11. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak for or against with respect to this public meeting? Seeing, sorry, we just, we have one max. You're going to speak with respect to the public meeting this evening? Great, thank you. Sure, we want to start with Max. Yep, sorry, Max, you probably haven't been here since we've had these. You got to push and hold the button that says talk, the one on the right. And then when you're done talking, you just release the button, so.
Okay, thank you, your worship, and thank you, counsel. I appreciate that you guys are keeping this. I know you have the deputations for agenda items later, and I think it's great that you're keeping that one going. This is a little different because you have the public meeting as well, so I'm taking advantage of that. I have a limited amount of time to be here tonight because I'm actually heading to the Federation of Agriculture Board meeting as soon as I'm done. And that's one of the hats I'm wearing tonight as I sit here before you. I understand the Lamberts weren't intending to speak, so I thought I'd jump ahead and make some comments, which I think will help the council with this item when it presents later on the agenda. So I'm also here as a friend of the Lamberts and a member of the farming community. And of course, having once sat around the table and understanding how the process works, I think I can offer some suggestions to help you. I have a fourth hat I'm wearing tonight, but I'm going to keep it in my back pocket till the end. So this one's pretty obvious. I mean, you got an unopened road allowance that exists on a map that nobody's ever seen for over 100 years. And really on the ground, there's no sign of it ever existing. I think that's really evident when you consider the house that partially encroaches on it, that at the time of its development, nobody considered this road allowance at that time either. And maybe it was an oversight that it should have even existed this long. But certainly when you consider, and again, looking, thinking of the Federation of Agriculture and our desire to preserve farmland whenever and wherever, this area is predominated by agriculture and it's certainly surrounded by prime agricultural designations. Another reason why this one should be considered to be closed and conveyed. And of course, the third reason would be it really goes nowhere. It doesn't connect to anything. And I think when, when we consider the Recreation Committee and the trails and the interest in trails recently, this is a dead end. It goes through a swampy area and it doesn't go anywhere. There's no possible connection. So I think there's better ones in the area to think about preserving. So I have two suggestions which I'd like to offer. And the first one is simply close and convey. This one's, this one's a no brainer. But the second suggestion has to go along with that. And that is, I think counsel needs to think proactively and make a resolution to count to staff to, I think work's already begun on this, but I think a resolution to continue and sort of embolden the effort to create an inventory and a map of all unopened road allowances, right of ways, and properties within, within the geographic area. So you can better understand what's out there, what you have. And then when these come up, instead of considering them willy nilly individual, you'll have a vision and maybe it goes before the Rec Committee at some point for them to weigh in on and say, you know, these ones are appropriate, these ones are unnecessary, and get a greater vision and be proactive rather than sitting here and allowing emotion to enter the room to say, oh, we should save them all until we know better. Let's know better and then make an informed decision as each one comes forward instead. So that's all I really wanted to say, but I'm going to throw my fourth hat and say, the Raiders made it to third round. It starts tomorrow night in Port Hope. There's a game on Friday. And Reed Lambert was the hero of Thursday night last week when he scored the game winner. And I think y'all should get out and see some more games. I know we've got counselors who do come and some staff who come regularly, but it would be nice to see more support. The town's been great supporting the Raiders. Sorry to jump off topic a bit, but I just wanted to get that plug in there as I'm wearing my Raiders jacket tonight.
Oh, that's great. Thanks, Max. Does anybody have any questions or comments with respect to Max's presentation this evening? Go ahead, Bill.
Max, I know that Lambert chose not to speak, but I, what is, what is going to be the benefit of conveying the property? Like, is it gonna, how is it going to be used any different than it is now?
Yep, yep, yep. Come on up, sir. We'll get you to just give your name to the council and then we'll get you to use the microphone just so the people at home can hear.
Name's Mark Lambert. I do have a prepared statement that I would read if, but I don't want to take away from Max's time as well.
No, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll start with, we'll answer, if you can answer Counselor Martin's question there. And then if you want to add to it, then you're more than welcome. That's, that's why we're here, so.
To convey the said property to us, it would be treated no differently as it has been for the last 25 years that we have been witness to it being used as agricultural and personal use.
So there's not going to be any additional benefit by conveying the property? Like, you're able to use your property now? And I, I'm just trying to figure out what's the reasoning for actually conveying the property to you? I mean, to declare surplus and sell it?
I think, I think Mr. Nobes may want to venture into this conversation. I was going to give you the opportunity at the end, Michael, but, and I know we're going to talk about it later, but you're more than welcome to venture in there now, so.
Thank you, worship, and Mr. Lambert can correct me if I'm wrong, but I recall from a former conversation that there's intention to ultimately, let me back up. The Lambert's own property at 2882 County Road 11 and 2932 County Road 11, a side-by-side parcel bisected by this road allowance. I believe the ultimate intention is to dispose of the, the house at 2932. And by way of doing that closure and conveyance of the road allowance and conveyance of the farmland surrounding that property over to 2882, less the house is the ultimate intention.
That is correct.
Thank, thank, thank you, Michael.
Good. Appreciate that, Michael, and thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Great, thanks, Counselor Martin. Is there any other questions or comments with respect to the public meeting this evening? Seeing none? Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, sorry, go ahead, sir. Yep. Yep, we've, we've got some time, so I just remind you just to push the button so the folks at home can hear it. We, we can hear you very easily, but the folks at home will, will yell at me if we don't make sure that they can hear us, so.
Thank you very much, members of council, staff, and representatives of Town of Napanee and County of Langston, Ancton. My name is Mark Lambert. I, with my brother and business partner, Brad Lambert, own and operate dairy and crop under, operation under the name of Lambrus Dairy. We are named as co-op applicants for the closure of this road allowance in question. In the spring of 2023, we purchased the farm which borders our home farm on the west line, knowing that it would complement our dairy and crop operation. It was presented to us as one farm consisting of two adjoining parcels, which ran the full length of concession four. During the process of finalizing this transaction, it was found that the road allowance in question dissected this farm where the area of these two parcels were thought to connect. Having resided there for over 25 years, there was never any knowledge of this existence. When we brought this information to the vendor, they too were also unaware. Alex Cowell of Cowell Law offered this explanation, I quote, "This road allowance was laid out by the Crown surveyors, not knowing where the public would need to travel in the future, and clearly there has been sufficient roadways created within needing, without needing this portion of road allowance," unquote. "Access between County Road 11 and Concession 3 is currently available via Pringle Side Road approximately 1 kilometer to the east and Johnson Side Road approximately 2 kilometers to the west." "The viable dairy and crop operation requires that we own and or lease numerous parcels of real estate located in various areas of our county. All of these parcels are accessed by a major highway, a side road, or a like road allowance. Due to the size of the equipment that we employ, the entrances to our land are typically very large and inviting. Unfortunately, every year, we discover some form of trespass in one or more location. The road allowance in question does not run between two parcels designated for trash disposal, public hunting ground, or open throttle testing sites. It is private property. The road allowance in question does run between two parcels, which we use for feed, grain, and crop production, not a pick-your-own fall decoration cornstalk plantation. It is private property. To the many cities, citizens to whom we share travel routes with and use those routes for the intended purposes only, I say thank you. In closing, I respectfully request that council take the reasons stated into consideration and vote road closed. Thank you."
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Is there any questions with respect, respect to the comments we just remade? And I know we're going to, we'll deal with it later on in our agenda, so you're more than welcome to stick around and watch if you want. So if there's nothing else, and is there anyone else in the body of the council chambers that would like to speak with respect to this public meeting? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to adjourn the public meeting. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Next up, deputations, scheduled deputations with respect to new items, and I don't believe we have any, Madam Clerk? Deputations with respect to items on the agenda, and I don't believe we have anything there either. And correspondence with respect to items on the agenda, nothing there either, I don't think, eh? Okay, moving on, unfinished business. I don't believe we have any unfinished business that I'm aware of. And the administrative consent agenda, we'll, we'll break this down. Just bear with us. There's quite a few items on this. With respect to the council meetings, regular session of council, March 12th, and the special session of council, March 21st, 2024, is there anything in those minutes that anyone would like to speak to or talk about? Seeing none, committee minutes, the downtown advisory committee and the pool advisory committee. Is there anything in those two committee minutes that anyone would like to speak to? And I'll ask Counselor Hicks and Counselor Pennell if there's anything that you would like to highlight in those minutes? Yep, go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Through you, worship. Thank you. Just the, the pool committee met prior to, to our meeting here to, to go over the mandate letters that, that we'll deal with later on in tonight's, tonight's meeting. And that's basically what our meeting was, is we went through detailed as to what our mandate was. So if there's any questions regarding any of this, it was also brought up in, in the mandate letter review, annual review as well. So I'm here for any questions if council has any. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Counselor Pennell. Is there any questions of Counselor Pennell? Seeing none, and is there anything you would like to highlight, Counselor Hicks?
Not at this time, your worship.
Great, thank you. Moving on, correspondence for information items dated March 26, 2024. Is there any correspondence for information items that someone would like to talk about? Seeing none, council inquiry follow-up with respect to this report. Is there anything in the council inquiries follow-up anyone would like to speak to or have any questions of? Seeing none, active report Legislative Services, March 2024. Is there anything in the Legislative Services report that anyone would like to draw attention to or speak to? Seeing none, activity report Fire Department, March 26, 2024. Is there anything in the Fire Department activity report that anyone would like to draw attention to or speak to? Seeing none, active report Infrastructure Services, March 2024. Is there anything in the Infrastructure Services report? Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, worship, through you. I've received not many, but a couple of phone calls regarding the leaf, spring leaf and brush pickup. And just wondering, with the date that has been chosen for this, along with the date that was chosen for the fall of 2023, as to, it seems to be a little early, even though that we had a easy winter. We're still seeing some of it lingering around, and I do believe we're going to get some more snow as well. But I'll just go through the dates here and 2000, these are all for the spring pickup. In 2022, or sorry, 2021, it was April 26th, 2022 is May 9th, 2023 was May 1st, and now in 2024, scheduled for April the 15th. And just so I can answer, not many, but a few of the people that I need to, why was this date picked in? Is there a possibility that we can put it off a couple more weeks?
I think, Christie, are you able to take a stab at that one?
Through your worship, I will attempt to answer this. I believe it was scheduled due to Public Works Department's availability and getting into the spring construction schedule. Looking outside, it's quite evident that most of the leaves are now down. Again, it depends on what kind of season we're going to have, whether things dry up a bit and people are, are provided the opportunity to clean up. But there was a great deal of planning put into, to the timing, and I think ultimately it was to better address staffing levels and, and the department's availability.
Thanks, Christie. Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to remind everybody that they can drop off, even though it's a little bit more of an inconvenience than having it picked up at the end of your road, that it can be dropped off at both of the landfill, sorry, the landfill in South Fredericksburg and then also the transfer site in Roblin, right? So we're still doing that again this year?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And if we wanted to maybe push back the date, who should we maybe ask for this?
Through your worship, I'll make some notes from tonight's meeting and we'll pass it along to the Public Works Department.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, folks. This, this whole concept of trying to predict the weather is becoming very difficult these days, so. Moving on, activity report Financial Services, March of 2024. Is there anything in the Financial Services report that anyone would like to highlight or bring to anybody's attention? Seeing none, activity report Growth and Expansion, March 26, 2024. Is there anything in that activity report that anyone would like to make note of or speak to? Seeing none, Community and Corporate Services Activity Report. Is there anything in the Community and Corporate Services Activity Report that anyone would like to speak to or talk about or ask a question? Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, worship, through you. On this report, we see that there's draft logos for advisory committees. I'm just wondering what that is for? And also there's some money numbers here for February of 2023, 2024, March 2023, and March 2024. And it just says total revenue by year fiscal year. I'm just not quite sure what that is for.
I see Mr. Zadaberg may be able to answer that question.
So I see it's a year-over-year because, okay, thank you. And the, and the logos? Okay, thank you. And this would be something that would be brought to council for approval? Great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Pennell. Is there anything else with respect to the Community and Corporate Services Activity Report? Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, through you, your worship. Brandt, just more of an observation slash question. I noticed that you've referenced the RFP for the installation of the CCTV cameras and the bids. It closes tomorrow. Is it possible that we can put out a notice to residents of Napanee that they can register their, their doorbell cameras, et cetera, with CamSafe and how that works? I saw it. I don't know if I saw it on the town site. There was information on it. But if we could put that out there again and explain that it's just a registry with your name and a contact phone number, email for the OPP to call in the event of a burglary assault. I think they used some surveillance footage from residential cameras for the arena fire. So if we could put that out there, the OPP have all the information on it, and it would be of great help to them, I think. Thanks. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything else with respect to this report? Seeing none, activity report Access E11, January and February 2024. Is there anything of note that anyone would like to highlight with respect to the E11 report? Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, worship, through you. First of all, I just want to say thank you for bringing these reports back after the situations that we've had and, and stuff. So it's nice to see it's back, but I still have that burning question. I'll give you a little, little thing that I found on the report first. January, in the January report, there was 29 Public Works records or issues, let's say. And 13 of them were environmental. On the February, there was 29 Public Works and 50 environmental. I don't believe that council is still getting these issues portrayed to us. We've gotten a couple over the last month or so, but out of all of those, I'm convinced that whoever's putting through these issues is selecting that council wants to be noticed, notified of this. My question tonight is, if somebody's putting through an issue and they click that they want to notify council, does the software automatically pick that up or is somebody manually having to forward that to us?
Madam Clerk, I don't know if you're in a position to answer that question or if it's something that we need to, to, to bring back to Counselor Pennell maybe at our next meeting, when we talk to our IT people.
Through your worship, just that I don't accidentally misspeak on this, I think it would be best if we bring it back to council.
And that's fantastic. Thank you.
Yep, great, great. Thanks, thanks, Counselor Pennell. So we'll, we'll bring that back to council at our next meeting, so. Having said that, we'll look for a motion to note and receive, and bear with me, it's kind of long. The council minutes, regular session of council, March 12th, 2024, and special session of council, March 21st, 2024. Committee minutes of the downtown advisory committee, pool advisory committees. Correspondence for information items stated March 26, 2024. Council inquiries, follow-up, and activity reports from Legislative Services, Fire Department, Infrastructure Services, Financial Services, Growth and Expansion, and Committee and Corporate Services for the month of March 2024, and the E, Access E11 report for January and February 2024. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Items for consideration is up next, gifting agreement with the Kingston Community Health Center. And Mr. Zadaberg, are you going to speak to that? Great, thanks, Mr. Zatterberg. Does Counselor Penel?
Thank you, worship, through you, Mr. Zatterberg. I'm glad that you added that on to the end because I have a full page on that one specific issue. We released the press release and stating this wonderful new venture that we're going down through and that people click here and that took them to Healthcare Connect. And I have, again, I don't know why it's tonight, but I've only had a couple of people call me on it, but one's enough, that they felt that they were just in a loop because they've already registered with Healthcare Connect, and they're still waiting for a doctor. And then we put out this press release. I understand a hundred percent that nothing happens overnight. And that I see in the report is the difficulty is going to be guaranteeing one hundred percent is delivered, and that's going to take some time. However, I think that there was a little bit of a misconception there that we released the press release and it goes forward. We ask them to click to register. People that are already registered are sitting there waiting to be connected with a doctor. So we're still in a holding pattern. My question tonight was, do we have any sense of an idea as to when people are going to start, the residents are going to start to see phone calls of being connected with a physician?
Mr. Zatterberg? Well, if you want to start, and I maybe I can add to it, so. Did you wish, maybe I can add to it as well. We do have to understand, and I think we all understand, this this project that we're looking at and we're engaged in is been ongoing for an extended period of time to put this together. We feel that in order to get every, or as close to every person within this municipality, primary healthcare, that this is the model that will do it. The model that we we had engaged with prior to with respect to the physician recruitment. While it served its purpose, we don't believe that it's a sustainable model that will get every person in this municipality, primary healthcare. The concept of this model that we believe in is that we're going to allow doctors to be doctors, and they don't have to focus on the administration. They don't have to run businesses. They're going to be provided the opportunity to simply be physicians. And that in and of itself should see some positive yards with respect to getting people off the Healthcare Connect database and into doctors' offices. So but we understand that this isn't going to happen overnight, and it can't happen overnight because there's 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 going to be a transition that's going to happen at the at the health center. That is going to take some time. And just physically, trying to take the people off the Healthcare Connect list is going to take some time to to get there. So but we honestly believe that this model is our best option to get people into doctors' offices. And me in my heart, I believe that that's what it is. So but we do ask that people just bear with us. If they're already in the Healthcare Connect loop, for better lack of a word, those folks will get a hold of you. And I think from my understanding that obviously, they're going to try and prioritize the same as they would in an emergency room atmosphere where, you know, they're going to try and get the people that need the imminent healthcare off that list as soon as possible. So that in a very rudimentary term is what we're hoping for. And I do think that we've taken a bold and aggressive look at healthcare in this community, and I do believe it'll work. So all we ask is just just bear with us. Ensure that if you're a resident of this municipality, that you engage in the Healthcare Connect program and just bear with us. But I do think that that number of five thousand that we're looking at now, we should start seeing some positive yards with respect to that. So it's just going to take a little bit of time, but we will get there, and I honestly believe that. So I don't know if that is of any help to you, Counselor Penel, but you're, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Actually, it's great help, especially coming from yourself to assure residents that this program's here. Unfortunately, I was away from the last meeting when this was put through, but I support it one hundred percent. And I think that is a great thing for the residents of Greater Napanee. It's unfortunate that it's on the backs of the taxpayers, and we will do our due diligence to go after the provincial and federal government regarding this. My concern is with it being a two-year pilot project is that this is early days, and those days are going to go by fast before we see any tangible results. There's going to be lots of behind-the-scenes things happen. So I just hope that we have measures in place that we can track this to make sure that it doesn't get beyond us and that that our our numbers will be skewed by it only being, you know, nine months of a program and not being feasible to go forward. I mean, it's a it's a large chunk of money every every year to be to have this going. And I think that we're on the right path, as you say, Mr. Mayor. But I just, hopefully, that we can assure the residents that they're not just going to be stuck in a loop.
And I think you're absolutely right, Counselor Penel, that there are provisions with respect to our agreement that are going to allow us to ensure that positive yards, and sorry to keep using the golf term, but positive yards are going to be achieved with this. And I have a lot of faith in it. It makes sense. And I think it's going to, it's also going to assist not only in attracting healthcare professionals to our community. I think it's going to help us maintain or keep healthcare professionals in this community, which, as we all know, it's a great community to live in. It's a great community to grow up and retire in. But, you know, there's physicians and healthcare professionals that may want something different. But I think this model is something that will help us not only bring people into this system, but also to keep them here. So again, I feel very positive. I think it's a good idea. And we all do realize and recognize the fact that we at this level of government really shouldn't have to fund this type of project. But we also have a responsibility to our taxpayers to try and provide something for them with respect to primary healthcare. We've got a community that's an aging community, and I think we owe it to our municipality to try and do everything within our capabilities to try and provide primary healthcare to everybody. So.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments with respect to this? Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a lady phone me just yesterday about this very subject. And I wasn't able to answer a question, and I don't know if anybody can answer it tonight. Mr. Mayor, you actually mentioned that it's going to be prioritized if people's conditions, medical conditions or whatever. This lady actually asked me, she said, I've been registered for two years now on that system. Are they going to give any prioritization to somebody who's been on it for two years or somebody that just listed, like, went on two weeks ago or whatever? So I don't know if anybody can answer that.
I I can try, Counselor Martin. My best guess is that, and again, we have to realize that we're providing this opportunity for healthcare people to do it, but we're not the ones that are actually administrating it or administering it. So but my best guess is, from my understanding, is that when you when you register with Healthcare Connect, they ask you a number of questions, including your address and what your health conditions are like at that at the current time. And I may be wrong here, but I think that's those are the questions that are asked. And I think that, like I say, obviously, it's it's kind of a large-scale triage as far as I understand it anyways, and the fact that, you know, there are some people out there that need primary healthcare today, and then there's some that, you know, maybe it'll be next week. So but I can't honestly say one way or the other whether there's any credit given to somebody that's been on that system longer. But I have faith in our healthcare professionals with respect to how they're going to whittle those numbers down. And I think they're going to to do, you know, they're going to be as fair and as quickly at that as possible, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Like I said, I don't I didn't, I don't think anybody can really answer some of these questions. But she did have a, I thought it was legitimate question, and she actually asked me if possibly she should go back on Health Connect and redo it because of that very reason. So I, again, I couldn't answer her there. But anyway, thank you for.
I'm sure that if she she goes on the system or phones, that they'll tell her fairly quickly whether she's still actively on that system. I think they have those capabilities. So I just want to reinforce it, just to reinforce the fact that if you don't have a physician within this community to go on and make sure that you're logged in there because that's going to be the primary database, I guess, in which they're going to start to to assign people that are unassigned physicians. That's the primary database where they'll start assigning them to the health center. Counselor Hicks.
Through your worship, I'd just like to acknowledge something in the staff report, and that is under operational implications. So this isn't, there were some social media questions out there. This is not a free, here's six hundred grand, have a nice day, let us know how it works out. This is going to be monitored and tracked. So this is, I'm stating this for the benefit of the public. It's going to be monitored and tracked by finance. There will be a lag, so you're not going to know last month's information until probably the middle of this month or the end of the month. But the biggest part of that paragraph is, this does not change the town's understanding that the provision of healthcare is in the province of Ontario is first and foremost the responsibility of the upper-tier levels of government. So I think the taxpayers of Greater Napanee need to recognize that we've done everything we can within our lawful boundaries, for lack of a better word, to get doctors into this community. And it's well and good to call the councillors and the mayor and the staff, but you should be writing to your MPP, and you should be writing to your MP, and you should be telling them, this is what our town is doing for us. When are you going to step up? Because we cannot alone do this. We need the support of the municipality as well. So just putting that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything else with respect to the gifting agreement with Kingston Community Health Center? If not, we'll be looking for a motion to note and receive. And it goes on a little bit longer, but I'll read it here. Deputy Mayor Cowver. Moved by Deputy Mayor Cowver, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, and I guess just for the people watching, I'll read out the the full staff recommendation that the council received for information, the gifting agreement with Kingston Community Health Center report. And further, that council agrees this gifting agreement replaces the past practice of forgivable loans to incentivize five family physicians to locate in Greater Napanee. And further, that council agrees that this gifting agreement is in place for the greater community good and in recognition of the dedication of the medical professionals who choose to contribute to the needs of the Greater Napanee community. And further, that council authorized authorized the municipal clerk and mayor to execute the gifting agreement. And further, that council ratifies the gifting agreement between the town of Greater Napanee and the Kingston Community Health Center. And we do have a mover and a seconder. If there's no further conversations after that, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, folks. Next up is the request to close and convey unopened road allowance, County Road eleven. And, oh, sorry, Madam Clerk. Go ahead.
Through your worship, as council heard this evening through the deputations, there is a request before you to close and convey this particular unopened road allowance. If council chooses to move forward with this, there's also a bylaw to implement that decision later on this agenda. I believe all the information is in this report as well as in the linked report from the January thirtieth meeting. But if there are any questions of staff, happy to take those as well.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. Deputy, or sorry, Counselor Penel.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Madam Clerk, in regards to the January thirtieth report, it states that the farmhouse may encroach. Have we figured out, is it definitely encroaching the allowance now? Do we know this?
Through your worship, I have not seen those survey plans. I know that it was a possibility that was identified by the surveyor, but I have not seen that document. I do know that it's certainly located in very close proximity to an existing residential dwelling.
Okay, thank you. May I continue? Just want to be clear right off the bat, I'm not opposed to this. But I do believe that that the council should pause for a second and do our due diligence. This is one thing that I'd like to find out, is if that house is indeed encroaching on that allowance. But also too, much like any other any other division of land that we do, there's checks and balances to be done, much like the Karakwe or Quinte Conservation Authorities, things like that. If there's a section eight septic going on, we do we do checks and stuff like that. We have a master, a recreational master plan that states that we should look for active multi-use trails in the vicinity. I'm not saying that this is a trail that would work out for a multi-use trail, but we should at least do our due diligence and send it to the Recreation Committee to have them put their yes or no onto it as to a future, if a future trail would go through there. Taking in both of the deputations, I appreciate coming in and talking to us on this. And again, I'm not against it or for it. I just want to make sure that all of our Ts across eyes are dotted because we've learned in past council that once once something's sold, it's sold. So I just want to make sure that that we take care of that. And also with recommendation of Mr. Kaiser to do an inventory and do a map and also have that put back to the Recreation Committee to come up with an idea of how we can have active transportations outside of the town. So I just, I just want to, you know, pause a little bit. I know that this has gone on for over a year now, back to when there was the issue for drainage and now a report on January thirtieth, and now another one tonight. But I think that we, it would best suit us if we just took that one extra little step before we did this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penel. Deputy Mayor Cowver.
Yeah, through your worship, this has been talked about at the Rec Committee. I know there was a vote made to possibly pause all transfers, which I strongly disagree. I think each and every one needs to be looked at individually. There is definitely a need to look at these road allowances to see if they can go any further. This particular one, I've looked at it myself. It's a go nowhere. It's a go nowhere one. There is passages on either Johnson Side Road or Pringle Side Road within a kilometer of this particular location. That being said, I do like the advice of taking a a a detailed review of all of these road closures to take a look at for further down the road. But this particular one, I think, should go through as follows.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Yeah, thank you, worship, through you to Deputy Mayor Calver. During your discussions at Recreation Committee, there was a vote. You mentioned the vote was taken. How did that fare out? Could we, could you tell me if that was passed or not?
I cannot give you that information. We talked about it and there was a motion set forward. Everything will come right at the end of the night. And there was actually not a vote taken and he sent out a vote online to everybody. And I have not seen the results of that.
Okay, thank you. So this particular road closure has not been reviewed by the Rec Committee then?
We did look at it, but like I say, the recommendation come from one of our members to put a freeze on all road closures, period. And I, like I say, I don't, I don't think that's that's a rightful thing to do. As a, as a committee of council or an extended committee of council, it really doesn't, at the end of the day, it all comes back to council anyways for a decision. So that's where we are with that, that like we've talked about it. And like I say, this particular one, it just was brought up to just put a manatorium on all road closures. And like I say, I don't think that's the right, right direction. But that's, that's what we're here as council to decide.
Okay, thank you, just as a follow up and just a little, little confused because it was talked about, but then it was more talked about or the vote was was asked for on stopping all road closures. But nothing was decided on this one. There, this one with your Rec Committee then?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, gentlemen. Is there any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Actually, if Counselor Pennell were to put the suggestion in a motion, I'd second it because I, I agree with him. I think we need to put a bit of a pause on on some of these road closures and encroachments, right of ways. I think we need to look at the whole picture here. At first blush, I'm always in, I mean, we're a rural community, a farming community, and I always like to lean towards the farmer on it. But Max Kaiser actually confused me a little bit because he mentioned that nobody knows about it. Nobody uses it. And yet, Mr. Lambert said people are accessing his property from this. So obviously, people are aware of it and are using it, even though it may be for bad reasons, dumping garbage or whatever. But so I like Counselor Pennell's suggestion of taking a pause on this for the, and doing a little more research here.
I think Madam Clerk wants to weigh in. Go ahead, Jess.
Through your worship, sorry, I just wanted to clarify one point. I believe Mr. Lambert was speaking to trespassing that happens on road allowances generally. There was a photo sent out to council of the street view of this particular road allowance. It does just look like someone's front lawn, whereas some of the other ones do look like you can see the track where there is regular passage of vehicles. It's very obvious that this is a path that has been used to travel for for several years, whereas in this particular instance, from on the ground, there's, you would not know that there's a road allowance unless you saw the plan of survey that showed one. Just to clarify that point. And and just as a this is a further comment for council's awareness, currently procedurally, what staff do when we receive a road allowance application is that the internal lands committee meets and if staff identify any potential for recreation use of a road allowance, it would be forwarded to the Recreation Committee for comment. At the staffing level, there was no possibility of recreational use identified with this particular application. And that's why that was not done. But it, staff would certainly be supportive of formally incorporating that into any policy revisions going forward.
Thanks, Jessica. That's, I think, helps clarify, at least for me. Is there any other comments or questions with respect to this? And then we'll look for a motion, Counselor Hicks.
I would just, so I have thank you, Jessica, because you clarified what I understood Mr. Lambert's statement to be, and that was in the course of owning property and doing business as a dairy farm. There's trespassers everywhere. There's not particular trespassers on this property because it does look like somebody's cutting the grass. It's like a front lawn. So and when I look at the picture, there's no place to go. Anybody that had an ATV and was using that road allowance, it's going to be a dead, it's a cul-de-sac. They're going to only be able to go so far and then turn around and come back the same way. There's nowhere for it to go. So I understand what Counselor Pennell is saying. I agree with what Mr. Kaiser said earlier. I think there should be a proactive approach taken to this. And I don't know, Madam Clerk, if that needs to be, if I can do that as a second or as a recommendation at the end of the meeting under new business. I don't know if that would qualify to request that staff do an inventory of all unopened road allowances. See where they link up and provide that information to the Recreation and Trails Committee so that they could review it. I think it would be better to be proactive and have an answer when someone comes forward rather than doing everything on a case by case. Because doing it case by case is very not time consuming, but it's a little bit discouraging for the taxpayer that's coming forward, making the request that it all has to be done over the course of several months.
I think Madam Clerk would like to weigh in. Go ahead, Jess.
Through your worship, and Mr. Zatterby can add to this if he has additional comments. I would just say staff are currently working on such a project in conjunction with the Recreation Committee based on areas of priority identified by that committee. I also believe, just based on the it's very tedious work just because of the type of land records that are involved. You would need a full-time staff person working on this around the clock to get for an extended period of time to get that. So it's not going to be an immediate process, but it is something that is being worked on. And I do think it is procedurally relevant enough to this particular application that if a member wanted to make a supplemental motion under this heading, that that would be appropriate.
Thanks, Jess, Counselor Norrie.
Thank you. Just to get the ball rolling on the subject, I will move staff recommendation.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, staff recommendation that council receive for information Legislative Services report, close and convey unopened road allowance, County Road 11 report. And further, that council approve the road closure and direct that a bylaw to close and convey the land be passed subject to the following conditions. That council consider and decide on the merits of written and verbal submissions received up to and including the council meeting. And that should new information be received or further input received, raise points for further consideration, this report and opinion herein be revisited as needed. And we have a mover by Counselor Norrie and a seconder by Counselor Hicks. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to specifically the motion that's on the floor? And I think we probably, there'll be some more further conversations afterwards. But is there any questions or comments with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Opposed? Thanks, Counselor Pennell. We have three, four, one against, and one abstained. The motion is passed. Well, thanks, folks. I think the conversation what we need four to carry it? Oh, sorry. I will vote for. I guess I, my math's not very good these days. So thank you, Madam Clerk. So the motion is passed. I think it garners a good conversation, though, that that maybe, and I know the staff are working on it. And is this something, Jess, that maybe in the future that I have a report that could be brought back to identify all the things that we spoke to tonight and where we could go and what we can do with respect to these things?
Through your worship, staff could certainly do that. But if council wants for greater certainty to make a motion right now, that would also be appropriate.
Okay, Counselor Pennell.
Through your worship, I have a motion here.
Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Motion that the town of Napanee road closure by law be amended, amended, that all future road allowance closures or applications be presented to the Recreation Committee for review and comment to see if there's any interest to converting the allowance into a multi-use recreational trail.
Counselor Pennell has a motion on the floor, seconded by Counselor Martin. Is there any questions or comments? And I know that this motion doesn't address bringing a report back, but we'll deal with the motion that's on the floor first. So is there any questions or comments with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, folks. I think, are we done with this then? And we can have some further conversations afterwards. But moving on, growth and expansion. PLOPMA 2023 011 and PLZACO 2023 010, Richmond Mobile Home Community Phase 3. And I see Mr. Novos has come up to the front desk. Whenever you're ready, Michael, the floor is yours.
Thank you, worship. So this recommendation for approval of the Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment follows on from the public meeting that was recently held regarding this proposed development. The proponents planner is in the room in case there are any questions of council that may be appropriate for the planner to address. I will note that following the public meeting at the end of February, staff have not received any comments, questions or concerns from the public. And the development continues to be proposed in the same manner as it was presented at that public meeting. There have been no changes proposed by the proponent up until the date of this meeting here today. So upon completion of staff's review, agency review, staff are supportive of the the request for approval of the Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment to allow further expansion of the mobile home community. Available for any questions that council might have.
Great, thanks, Michael. Is there any questions, Michael, with respect to this matter? Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, worship, through you. Michael, I noticed with reading your report, and I thought, I think it was brought up during the last time we spoke about this, the two commercial buildings on the site, there could be a future for severance of this. That's where I was looking for it, the last one, two severance. Will, will these bylaws that we're doing tonight restrict that in any, in any way?
Through your worship, no, the, there are special provisions built in to the bylaw as presented to allow for those severances to proceed while maintaining a suitable amount of road frontage for the retained mobile home community parcel, if you will. So it provides good flexibility for potential future severance of those commercial lands and the ultimate development thereof. So those lands would have to go through a site plan control process. So they've been shown conceptually on the site plan documents that were presented at the public meeting. But more detailed engineering level details will be required when those developments are proposed to proceed.
Great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Pennell. Is there any other questions or comments for Michael with respect to this report? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council received for information, the growth and expansion, PLPMA 2023 011 and PLZACO 2023 010 Richmond Mobile Home Community Phase 3 report. And further, that council approved the Official Plan Amendment, zoning bylaw amendment applications subject to the following conditions that the council consider and decide on the merits of written and verbal submissions received up to and including the council meeting. And that should new information be received or further input received, raise points for further consideration, this report and opinion herein be revisited as needed. Moved by Counselor Pennell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Our next matter is Bylaw Enforcement Services contract. And Madam Clerk, are you going to speak to that one?
Through your worship, this report is brought in follow up to the direction that council gave at the, during the budget of an amount not to exceed $60,000 to be approved for bylaw enforcement services. If there are any further questions about the contract details, I'd be happy to answer those.
Great, thanks, Madam Clerk. Is there any questions or comments, Deputy Mayor Calver?
Yeah, I noticed we originally set up to $60,000, but this report's showing 47,350. Just looking for some clarification there.
So through your worship, that number is partially lowered because it's not for a full calendar year and partially because this was an amount that staff believe will provide the level of support that is necessary to achieve council's goals while still being fiscally prudent and give some flexibility if potentially there is a need. And we find this isn't working well, if there's a need to expand further. But that's the reason for the lower numbers. It's partially that we're now into April when this is going into effect. We've missed the first three months of the year.
Well, that's correct, but it looks like you're looking at April, May, then October, November. What about the months in between there?
So so through your worship, April, May, October, November are slower months. So we'd be looking at doing less hours than we previously had under the service with this contract provider. But then in our busy period, June through September, we would do a higher level of service than what we had in our past contract with them. Those would be the months that we see the greatest activities at our boat launches, street parking conflicts, nuisance property complaints. They, they start to pop up this time of year, but the enforcement is really ramping up June through September. So we're going to try this model out for a year and see if that better meets the municipality's needs rather than overstaffing in those quieter months.
Sounds good, thank you.
Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor Calvert. Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Madam Clerk, I see on the scheduling that we were just talking about that it says some Saturdays and evenings will be patrolled. I'd like to maybe just put out the possibility that we front load those Saturdays and and evenings so during the summer when it is busy with the boat ramp. Because even even though that we're going to have signs up and all these other wonderful things, I think that we still need to patrol that on the, on the weekends.
Through your worship, I should have been more specific in this report. The intention is to have three Saturdays out of every four be covered between this and full-time staff.
That's great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Deputy McCowher.
And if I could add one more thing to that, that is wonderful to have three out of four Saturdays. But if we could have them run till seven o'clock some evenings.
Through your worship, we will pass that feedback on.
Thank you. Great, thank you, Counselor Hicks.
I'll move staff recommendation, your worship.
We have a motion to move staff recommendation. Do we have a second or move it? Deputy Calver, seconded by Deputy Calver. Staff recommendation is to receive for information Legislative Services bylaw enforcement contract report. And further, that council authorizes the town to enter into a service contract with Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement, Inc., to provide enforcement services for parking, yard maintenance and other municipal bylaws for the remainder of 2024 at a cost of $47,350, inclusive of HST, with an option for annual renewal at council's discretion. Further, that council authorized the mayor and clerk to execute the necessary service contract documents. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Next up is the Centre Street Boat Launch and Parking Lot. And Madam Clerk, are you speaking on that one as well?
Through your worship, I can respond to any questions on this report. Yeah, I don't have anything further to add at this point.
Okay, great, thank you. I know we've had a number of discussions with respect to the boat launch in the past. So is there any questions or comments for Madam Clerk with respect to this report? Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
No questions or comments, I'll move staff recommendation. I think that they've done a really good job on coming up with a solution for us to a solution for us to try.
Great, Counselor Hicks has moved the uh, staff recommendation. Do we have a second or? Counselor Norrie, and just to for the folks watching at home, the council received for information, the Center Street Boat Launch and Parking Lot Report, and further that council endorsed the amended parking lot maintenance and enforcement strategy as presented, namely that beginning in the spring of 2024, the central concrete barriers with no parking signage will remain in place year-round as a standard practice, that the docks for the boat launch will be removed in the winter and installed in the spring at the discretion of the manager of facilities, based on the long-term weather forecast and staffing schedule, and beginning in winter of 2024, during the period where the boat launch docks are removed, that the boat trailer parking only signage will be bagged to indicate that the boat trailer parking enforcement will be done on a seasonal basis. Uh, yeah, go ahead, Deputy McCowber.
Just want to make one slight little recommendation there before we vote on this, that the signage will be bagged. I'd like to see if we're gonna bag the signage off to be at December 31st. Uh, there is a tournament that runs every year now till December 31st. So you technically could have people parking their boats down there, so.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we do have a motion on the floor, and I know that it's um, are we looking for something very specific as 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 a date? Or I know it says that in the beginning of winter 2024, which is uh, fairly open-ended, I think. So would you like to see something else? And we'll look for a friendly amendment if you do.
So through your worship, the intention of the recommendation from staff would be that whatever the period where the docks are not in, uh, we would not be enforcing for the trailer parking, and we would allow that to just be general parking. That's a little bit open-ended, just because as we've seen this winter is very unpredictable what our weather patterns might be year to year. We don't want to lock ourselves into precise dates. Um, but if there are concerns about uh, specific annual events, we could work around that instead.
And I think if, uh, yeah, I think as long as we know that the annual events are coming, that we'll make every attempt possible to to ensure that uh, the docks are available.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, some years it froze up December 1st, right? So but I mean, there is a tournament runs December 31st if you can get out in the water somewhere. So we'll just have to wing it and play it for a year.
Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor Calver. Uh, is there any other comments or questions before we call the vote? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Council Advisory Committee's annual review. Um, I think if everyone is good with this, uh, what I would like to do is defer this report and this discussion, uh, maybe for at least uh, probably four weeks anyways. What I would like to see is, and 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 I'm more than willing to have a conversation, is is that for the committees to provide us um, some information as to where they want to go and what they want to do. I think that's important. I know me personally, because I don't sit on those committees, it's sometimes difficult, and I do read the minutes and everything, but it's sort of difficult to get a feel for what the what the folks on these committees want to do. So uh, what I would suggest is rather than um, delve into this tonight, that we maybe we defer this report for three or four weeks, uh, allow the committees to come back with um, what their thoughts are as to where they want to go with respect to 2024 and and move forward. Is that a fair um, and uh, more than walking up conversation? Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, worship. I, if we're gonna defer it, which I I'm in agreement to, I I wouldn't like it to go very too too far. In my report, I do have a request and um uh, for some monies, and uh, the date on that letter that was provided to us is getting on now, so I I wouldn't want to run out. So if we could just have it sooner than later, although I am in agreement of postponing it for tonight.
Uh, oh, yeah, okay, uh, go ahead. Uh, I I guess, well, then why? I just want to ensure that every committee has the opportunity to have that conversation prior to us having that conversation. So I I just threw out the four weeks, but if we can do it sooner than by all means, Madam Clerk, did you want to weigh in on?
Through your worship, the only other suggestion that I might make for council's consideration would be um, because we can't predict what other items may come up on future agendas. If council wants to ensure there's a long, sufficient time available for discussion, uh, potentially consideration of a special meeting to have only dedicated to addressing advisory, all all matters related to advisory committees to ensure that there's enough time for very robust conversation.
And 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 I think, Madam Clerk, that's a that's a good suggestion. Um, so my next question would be, um, do all the committees have an opportunity in the next little bit to have a meeting and to provide their thoughts? Or what, how long, how long do we want to put this over for? Like, um, when's when's the next meeting for all the committees? Uh, Counselor Hicks?
Through your worship, it's three weeks roughly. It's not four, it's not two, uh, because our next, just in the case of the downtown advisory committee, it's not until uh, I think it's April 2nd. But I'd like people to have a chance to think about this. It's not something through, and there's gonna be lots of discussion and at least in the case of the downtown advisory committee. So with three weeks, Dave, I can't remember what the date was on your your letter.
Yeah, go ahead, uh, go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, through your worship. Chris, do you, I don't have our book in front of us for the pool committee right now, but when was our next meeting scheduled for? Sorry, April 4th. As long as it's, okay, hang on a sec, let me do some math.
Yeah, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, so the next recreation meeting for us is uh, April 24th.
Which is uh, starting to stretch it out there, yeah.
Yeah, it's getting out there. We we can maybe move move that forward. I'll have to take a look with everybody's schedules.
Okay, um, yeah, that might be, might be helpful. We can move it ahead so that, uh, like I say, if we can get all of our council committees to have a meeting, maybe the first week of April, we could look at maybe the second week of April for a special meeting to discuss the committees. Is that making sense, Madam Clerk?
Through your worship, I'll just note that you do have regular council on Tuesday, April 9th. And then the next regular council meeting has been postponed to April 30th because some members will be at Roma the week of April 22nd. So three weeks from today would be that week of April 15th.
So does does the week of April 15th work if we set up a special meeting with respect to that? Counselor Hicks?
Yes, but not the 16th. Uh, that's not, that's not going to work for me. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's, but that's good. Then we're narrowing it down. Um, how about the the Heritage Committee or the uh, or or Counselor Norrie's committee, the uh, Arts and Culture Committee?
Our next meeting's on the 2nd, so we're good to go. Any day but the 16th as well.
Okay.
For me.
Yep, perfect. Thank you. Uh, thanks, Bob. Uh, Bill?
Jessica, do we have a date set yet? Because we just had a meeting.
Through through your worship, the Heritage Committee is meeting on the 18th, but they did just give approval to a document to send to council that I think gets digs pretty far into the mandates. So I don't know that they would need to have another meeting just to speak about that.
Yeah, um, I I mean, yeah, I mean, uh, I think it it, I think, Bill, if you find that uh, you you don't have enough information with respect to that, if you can uh, book a meeting prior so that we can set up something in the week of the 16th, will that work for you? Or do you want?
Fine, yeah.
Okay, no, that's, and if you think you, there's other stuff there that you want to add into it, then maybe you can have a meeting, um, early April, and then we can be prepared for that, uh, for a special session there. Uh, Counselor Hicks?
Through you, your worship, is Wednesday, the 17th earlier, like five o'clock? A possibility? Five o'clock, I'll reiterate, 5:00 PM.
How's the 17th look for everybody? I know it's probably short notice, but uh, so five o'clock's not going to, uh, unless we do it earlier. Would be a Monday, 15th? Fif- 15th? Uh, Counselor Hicks, how's mornings look for you? And I know we're we're kind of venturing out there without Counselor Shank, but.
Monday, the 15th in the morning? Yeah, that should work.
Yeah?
Yep.
Well, we'll aim for that then? Okay, 9:30? Does that uh, sound fair to everybody? 15th of April at 9:30, yeah. Great, I think we have a plan, so appreciate that. Thanks, folks, and I'm sorry for the uh, for changing around. I just think we may be here for a substantial amount of time this evening if uh, and uh, we don't sort of preempt it a little bit, so. Um, Madam Clerk, are you looking for a motion with respect to uh, through this report that we defer to the 15th of April?
So through your worship, a motion for council's consideration, uh, the council received for information, council, I should know, not received for information, the council directs that discussion of the Council Advisory Committee Annual Review Report be deferred to a special meeting to be held at 9:30 AM on April 15th, 2024, to review all advisory committee matters. And uh, two birds, one stone, that the deadline for submissions for the members of the downtown advisory committee be extended for an additional four weeks.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Madam Clerk. Uh, sounds pretty accurate to me. Uh, do we have a mover and a second or? Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Uh, next up, Community and Corporate Services, purchase of four fleet vehicles. And I see Mr. Brown's coming up. So when you get in and settle, Chris, just let us know, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, worship. Um, I'll apologize in advance. Uh, got a little bit of a cough and cold here, so if I have to clear my throat, I apologize. Um, so just a a quick summary, I guess, um, of the report in front of you. Uh, three submissions were received for RFT CC 2023 01, which was for two crew cab white three-quarter ton trucks. Um, the three submissions were from James Braden Ford in Kingston, Scott Drummond Motors Limited in Campbellford, Bayview Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Limited in Sarnia. Um, the recommendation would be to go with James Braden Ford, uh, as they were the lowest price. Um, the there was two submissions received for RFT CC 2023 03, which for which was for a regular cab, heavy-duty chassis with a dump box. Um, just two submissions, James Braden Ford again from Kingston, Bayview Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, um, out of Sarnia. Um, this one needs a little bit of clarification in terms of the staff recommendation. James Braden Ford came in at $107, uh, and $54. Uh, Bayview Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram came in at uh, $100,933. Uh, the Ford truck is an F-550, the Ram is a 5500. Um, a couple of things went into the decision for staff recommendation. Uh, of course, we look at price, uh, pretty much first and foremost, but we do look at uh, many other factors when we're scoring these bids. Um, Bayview Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram was not able to meet minimum specs to include the payload plus package, which was important to us. Um, we do have a very uh, similar truck in the Public Works Department. Now, there needs to be some clarification, too, on my report. Uh, as I was reviewing it today, I had to make a a phone call to for some clarification. Um, the snowplow prep package uh, was was able to be met. They checked off no, um, but they can meet that spec. So that that was a mistake when uh, doing the report on my end. Um, the other, the other big thing here is delivery time. Um, James Braden Ford, uh, estimated about six months delivery time, uh, whereas Bayview Chrysler was about 12 to 24 months. So uh, a little bit of a difference there in delivery time. Um, all things considered, with all the submissions for all the vehicles, uh, staff recommendation would be to go with the uh, Ford from James Braden. Um, the third, the two submissions were received for RFT CC 2023 04, which is for an extended cab white three-quarter ton truck. Again, the two submissions were James Braden Ford and Bayview Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Limited. Um, Ford came in at $68,644, and uh, Chrysler came in at $76,475. Um, it's an F-250 from Ford and a Ram Tradesman from uh, Dodge Chrysler. Just moving into the financial implications, we, all of the recommendations from staff would be under budget. It would also allow us a a buffer for fees associated with licensing and accessories on the truck, like accessories or things like back racks and amber light, things like that. Um, and just operationally, these new trucks would be replacing existing fleet, um, truck 1154, 1155, 1235, and 1349. Uh, as soon as we receive the new uh, trucks, we will be putting those four trucks on gov deals to sell uh, immediately. Uh, if there's any questions on the report, happy to take them now.
Great, thanks, Chris. Is there any questions up, Chris? Uh, go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Uh, thank you, worship through you, Chris. Uh, thanks for the report on the RFT CC 2023 dash 04 for the utilities budget. Um, the the three-quarter ton truck, it was budgeted at 90 grand, and it comes in at 68. And I I understand that you're saying there's a little bit of room in there for to outfit it a little bit, but that's, that's quite a bit of difference there. Are are we, I just want to make sure that we're getting the truck that we need and we wanted.
Yes, uh, so through your worship, Counselor Pennell. So this one's a little bit different in the fact that the utilities budget is passed before uh, the town's budget, and so the uh, these weren't received in time for that. Um, but with this truck in particular, it does need a a new snowplow with it as well. So there's, it needs more of a buffer uh, in order to make that happen. Um, but uh, all things considered, we should still be under budget.
Okay, and you'll be happy with that truck, Ben?
Yes, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Pennell. Is there any other questions or comments for Chris? Uh, go ahead, Deputy McCowber.
She mentioned the one truck is a, an F-550. And so the F-550 is replacing a 250, is that correct?
So through your worship, Deputy Mayor Calver, the current truck that that's gonna be replacing is is a one-ton with a with a one-ton chassis with a dump box uh, right now. Um, we're looking to upgrade that. It's a, it's a three, no, it's not a, it's not a Ford. Uh, so it's a GMC, um, and it's a one-ton. So we're looking to upgrade that. We're looking at getting a similar-sized truck that the Public Works Department has, uh, more payload, able to haul material, and and we would just be going to a regular cab, because our existing truck is a crew cab, uh, which really isn't needed, because this truck is more specialized to uh, landscaping projects and hauling material like gravel and sand and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any other questions or comments? If not, we do have a recommendation from staff, which reads, uh, if council received for information, Community Corporate Services, purchase of four fleet vehicles report, and further that council accepts the RFT CC 2023 dash 01, 03, and 04 process undertaken by municipal staff, and further that council award two crew cab three-quarter ton trucks, one regular cab heavy-duty truck with a dump box, and one extended cab three-quarter ton truck to James Ford and James Braden Ford Limited, and further that council authorized purchase of two crew cab three-quarter tons, one regular cab heavy-duty truck with dump box, and one extended cab three-quarter ton. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Community and Corporate Services surfacing for Northred Sports Court, and I believe Mr. Brown, that's you as well.
Thank you, worship. Um, so yeah, the the report in front of you is um, it's pretty basic. I'm happy to answer questions. I I would just uh, like to, uh, some details on the submissions, uh, five submissions, which we were very pleased with. Um, uh, I think when we started this project, we went out for tender for the project, and we didn't receive any. So um, we're really pleased to get five submissions. Um, PND Ceiling and Lines from Deserano, uh, Court Surface Specialist Limited from Mississauga, Workhouse Sports Installation from Gore's Landing, uh, Barassa Sport Technology Plus from Quebec, Jeffrey G. Wallens Construction Limited from Brighton, Ontario. Um, the submissions uh, range from 21,364, which was PND, um, all the way to 45,588, which is Jeffrey G. Wallens. Um, staff uh, would recommend uh, to go with PND Ceiling and Lines, um, not only because of the price, but they also were able to show uh, some references locally. They've worked with the City of Elville, Loyalist Township, as well as um, close to home here, the NDSS Courts that were recently done. They did those. Um, so in looking at that, their references, we're confident within their ability, uh, and also they're they're close by and local, and um, that would be the staff recommendation. Just wanted to add that we're gonna be working closely with the successful bidder to complete this as soon as possible. Um, the fencing, the brand-new asphalt is already in place. Uh, we just need to uh, surface this court so we can get people playing on it this summer.
Great, uh, thanks, Chris. And I know that uh, the residents of Napanee would be very thankful, because I know we've had a number of questions and. the residents of Napanee will be very thankful because I know we've had a number of questions and comments with respect to, to the lining. So thank you very much, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, your worship. I'll move staff recommendation and good work, Chris.
We have Counselor Hicks moving, Deputy Mayor Cowher seconding. If there's no further questions, comments, or concerns, all in favor of the motion with respect to the staff recommendation, opposed, motions carried. North Fredericksburg Community Center Water System Engineering Evaluation, and I believe Andrew will be speaking to that. So the floor is yours, Andrew, when you're ready there.
Through your worship, I don't have much to add to the report. I just wanted to reiterate in the public forum that the water at that community center is safe, has tested to be safe and continues to be safe. This was just a engineering evaluation report that's required to ensure the hall meets guidance documents that's been produced by the province. And I'm open to any questions council might have.
Great, thanks, Andrew. Is there any questions or comments with respect to the report or presentation for us? Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Through you, worship. Andrew, very thorough report. I understood it. We have no choice. I move staff recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Hicks. We do have a motion on the floor. Do we have a seconder? Deputy Mayor Cowher. Is there any further questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead, Counselor Pinnell.
Through your worship, thank you, Andrew. Thanks for the report. My question is, we think that by changing a filter will get us in the compliance, but I'm just wondering if there's a backup plan if it's not.
That's through your worship. Staff have considered lots of options, including looking to find the wells that were on site before that facility hooked up to that raw water main, a cistern. Staff feel this is the most appropriate and cost-effective approach. The dollar figure will probably be reduced as the engineer was originally going to look at the three premises the town owns that pull off that main. However, this is the only one that's regulated by the Ministry of the Environment. The others are regulated through the Health Unit, and so whatever changes we make at this one will subsequently make internally at the others. To answer your question, yes, through my technical background and expertise and then speaking with some engineers along the way, we feel this change in filter will subsequently get us in compliance.
Okay, thank you. And I think I need to, to explain my, explain a little bit. It's not as simple as just changing out the filter. It's changing the whole style of filter. And I think that's what I should have said. You know, it's not just like the filter's dirty, let's change it. It's, it's, it's a different filter for a different process.
Yes, that, that's correct. Through your worship, the, the filter, they're all based on pore sizes, and so we have, I believe, a 25, 10 and 5 currently, a one micron absolute is a very fine filter that allows essentially no particles through it. The absolute is that it's meets NSF standards and that, that the pore sizes are very small that won't even let bacterial or viral particulates through it.
Thank you.
Great, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowher.
Through your worship, Andrew, as you know, you've designed our water system as well. So I'm assuming this will have the same sort of a valve in it, that if there's anything there that's not liked by it shuts off, so there is no water flow?
Yes, through your worship, that, that's correct. It, it wouldn't be the filter itself, it's the NSF 55A certified UV that's, that's at all three of those facilities. That if the light transmittance isn't at 75% or above, or the UV light can be effective, it essentially shuts itself off and creates an alarm to sound.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks, Deputy Mayor Cowher. Are there any other questions of Andrew? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation to receive for information on North Fredericksburg Community Center Water Systems Engineering Evaluation Report and further that council authorized staff to proceed with securing the services of EB Engineering to produce an engineering evaluation report for North Fredericksburg Community Center. Further that council authorized staff to follow the town's procurement policy to have the required upgrades completed to ensure North Fredericksburg Community Center meets the requirements of Ontario Regulations 170-03, the Engineering Evaluation Report and Procedure for Disinfecting Drinking Water in Ontario. Moved by Counselor Norrie. Oh, do we already got a mover and a seconder? Sorry. I'm behind the hair, so we just need to call for the vote. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Correspondents submitted by Counselor Norrie, Tartan Day, and I knew I was going to that side of the House, so go ahead, Counselor Norrie, if you'd like to speak to this first.
No, I just received this letter from Mr. Gardner a couple of days ago. Just, it's a rich heritage of Scottish history in this area. He's asked that we recognize the recognized day of Tartan Day, April 6th. No flag required at this year. Just a proclamation. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Norrie. We do have a recommendation that council received for information, the correspondence from James Gardner and that council proclaimed April 6th, 2024 as Tartan Day in the town of Greater Napanee. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor Martin. Is there any other further comments, questions, or concerns? Go ahead, Counselor Hicks, you've got a devil's smile on your face.
I'm looking forward to seeing all those kilts roaming around Napanee, so if you've got one, you should probably wear it.
Thank you, Counselor Hicks. Is there any other comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Bylaws, bylaw number 2024-0019 to adopt official plan amendment number 51, PLOPMA 2023-011. Look for a motion to put it on the floor, moved by Deputy Mayor Cowher, seconded by Counselor Pinnell. Ready, first, second, and finally pass this 26th day of March, 2024. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Bylaw number 2024-0020 to amend zoning bylaw 0222 as amended, PLZACO 2023-010. Look for a motion to put it on the floor, moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cowher. Ready, first, second, and finally pass this 26th day of March, 2024. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Bylaw number 2024-0022 to permanently close and convey an unopened municipal highway. Look for a motion to put it on the floor, moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cowher. Ready, first, second, and finally pass this 26th day of March, 2024. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried.
Just for the record, I abstained.
And we have one person abstaining, which is Counselor Pinnell. Bylaw number 2024-0022 to provide the disposition of 53 Community Road. Look for a motion to put it on the floor, moved by Counselor Pinnell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cowher. Ready, first, second, and finally pass this 26th day of March, 2024. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Information reports from members. Do any members have any information or reports they'd like to speak to tonight? Seeing none, are there any inquiries of council to staff that we can ask staff to look into for us? Seeing none, are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, is there any new business? Seeing none, announcements. Is there any announcements anybody would like to make tonight? Go ahead, Counselor Norrie.
Just quickly, a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, just giving a shout out to the OPP in our bylaw, we had a homeless encampment on private property near the Mission, Napanee Crane. Lot of problems in the neighborhood through the nights, meeting with the OPP in bylaw. They moved them under the Trespass Act. The next day, all the neighbors came out with a huge trailer, bigger than a dumpster, and filled it with garbage and had to pay for themselves to get rid of it, which they did. There's been a couple of incidents since, but the OPP even vied and looked after. So once again, there's a lot of complaints about this, but the OPP in bylaw did an excellent job and the neighbors saw. And they're, they're continuing to monitor it, so just, just a shout out. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Norrie. Shows you what can happen, I guess, when the community works together, so thank you for that. Is there any other announcements? Deputy Mayor Cowher.
I just wanted to comment on what Max Kaiser talked about earlier. The Raiders are going ahead and they're in the next series against Port Hope, so everybody should come on out and support your local team. They've had an amazing turnout and some pretty high 50-50 draws as well at us, so. Go Raiders, go.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cowher. And I know that we're all, we're all rooting for the Raiders to get out of their division, and this is, this is the opportunity to do that, so thank you. Is there any other announcements? Seeing none, the forward calendar. Is there anything on the forward calendar anybody would like to speak to or talk to? Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Through you, your worship. Just wondering, we're having the official plan public meeting. Is there any idea of a date on that? Is it going to be daytime, nighttime? Off week, same week as council?
Through your worship, we would like to, what, what staff have done, and we, we've gone through the, the first draft from Arcadis, made it many comments. We're looking to get that brushed up by Arcadis, sent back to us, confirm our comments have been addressed, released to the public. Keep it open and available for the public to review for at least a month. And then hold, hold the open house. So we want to give the public time to review and come up with comments, questions to bring to the open house and have those conversations with staff. At this point in time, I, I can't commit to a date. I think it's a little too early to determine a date, but when we get closer to that time, when we at least get the first draft back, make sure it's as we expect, then we can, we can circulate essentially a poll, I guess, with council to see what the preferred date would, would be. As I'm sure council may, may wish to, to attend, attend the open house. So at this point in time, I would say we're probably two months away, you know, we're probably going to be towards the end of May in that timeframe.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Hicks. Thanks, Mike. Is there anything else with respect to the forward calendar? Deputy Mayor Cowher.
So just to clarify, the, through your worship, the meeting for the 23rd has been canceled. That's now scheduled for the 30th, is that correct?
Through your worship, that is correct. And if that is, yes, that is what is showing there. Just based on a number of members being away for council or for conference and concerns of a quorum on the 23rd.
Okay, I'd be out of country on the 30th, but I'll do my best to zoom in or see what I can accomplish.
Great, thanks, Deputy Mayor Cowher. Is there anything else? Or is there anything with respect to the council resolution tracker, which is also part of the forward calendar? Seeing none, look for a motion to confirm the proceedings of the town, town council for the town of Greater Napanee Corporation, the town of Greater Napanee, moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cowher. Ready, first, second, and finally pass this 26th day of March, 2024. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried, and a motion for adjournment, moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, folks. We covered a lot of ground this evening and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.